Can you like to call this meeting in order? Second. Those questions follow?
No.
Burgess?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Fires?
Yes.
Takes?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Boys? Please all stand for the flag. Apply to the village. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all. Those questions follow? Burgess?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Fires?
Here.
Takes?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
Boys? Here. At this time we can move to item number two, public comment. All questions will be directed to the chair. And everyone, I know you but the mayor is not here today, so please be kind. And these people will give you three minutes to become any topic on the agenda.
Hello, my name is Jan Clark. I would like to speak about a proposal. And my proposal would be under the agenda item, um, uh, three F. It would be village administrator. My proposal is that Mr. Fairman be seated next to the mayor at each meeting. And that the attorney not be present at the meetings, but only to contact it when, I have three minutes, Rose.
I understand, item on the agenda though.
It's on the agenda, it says village administrator.
Is there a report on the agenda?
Well, it weren't. Excuse me, village administrator. And I'm not done yet. So that would save the village quite a lot of money, not to have the attorney at the meeting all the time, like he's been doing. And telling the mayor what to do. It looks like every, every other comment that's made comes from the attorney who's running the show. Now, this also would mean that Mr. Fairman gave that he's, uh, he's up there somewhere. Uh, in office, that he's been paid to represent things that he does. That he'd be up there to receive questions as well. That's, I think that's a good comment to make, thank you.
I will definitely bring it up to the mayor. If anybody else is gonna stand up, I did not come to interrupt Ms. Clark, because I don't wanna be rude. But I ask that anything else that comes on the agenda, any questions you have, have to be directly related to an item on the agenda. While J.W. Fairman is a village administrator, his name is on the agenda, his position or where he sits is not. It is something that could be discussed at a committee meeting, which I won't present to the mayor. However, so if anybody else will come up and say, if you could please remain to items on the agenda, I would agree with you. I do not wanna be rude, and I don't wanna interrupt anybody. Please state your name.
My name's Mike Warren. I'm here on public safety. I called out for 911. Never showed up at my house. I'm Kim Clark's fiancee, she's a dispatcher for Soft Village. I had 911 call on the Chicago Heights, went to Lansing, and then went to Lindwood. I sat at my home for 58 minutes. Finally, we reached out, I went to the police station, walked in. All the dispatchers were sitting there having a good time, doing nothing. And they asked why I was there, and I said I would like to speak to an officer. And I asked for Frank White, they didn't even know who Frank White was.
Again, sir, I completely understand that that's...
No, you don't understand, because I was sitting at my house for 58 minutes. A lot in that.
Sir, sir, I don't wanna be rude, but again, that item...
You are being rude.
Again, that item is not on the agenda, I'm sorry.
It's public, well, public safety.
Sir, that item is not on the agenda. It is something that could be addressed at a committee meeting.
What is the committee meeting?
Next Tuesday. And that's the time, that is the time that anybody can talk about anything, and the items do not have to be on the agenda.
Okay.
So I would suggest that you can come in next Tuesday, but I will address this with the mayor.
Don't just keep coming back next Tuesday and take your time off work to come here for PM.
And I will ask that that item be on the agenda to actually be discussed by the board, as well as a time for comments from the public.
Okay, now I have a question for the mayor. Can I address that?
Well, the mayor's not here.
Okay, well, why did I sit at my home in my driveway for 58 minutes? Sir, I'm sorry, there's something called Robert Bruce's order. She's answering a question. I was asking if you'd come back and talk. I understand you were asked to come back and talk, you know, but if the board's here, they're ruling on this, that's what it has to be fought.
I just asked that anything, after the meeting, I will be here, if you wanna personally give me your information, I will personally send it to Dave, the mayor. However, the item that you're discussing, dispatch, is not on the agenda. It can be on the agenda, and it can be discussed at a committee meeting.
I'm just asking that if you approach the podium, please discuss something on the agenda. If you guys don't wanna listen this much, but a lot of things can happen in 58 minutes.
I totally understand that.
The response time for Soft Village is three minutes.
I understand that.
So why would I sit in my driveway for 58 minutes?
Sir, I would like to have that addressed, I just have to follow what the agenda says.
Oh, guys. My name's Larry Stewart, Soft Village. And item on the agenda is what I'm supposed to ask. Okay, I'm looking at this agenda, and I see all the different functions that people have. Are we all looking at that? But I want to see an item that I can talk about, except new business. Is that what we're referring to? The two things, the approval of a councilable, and a motion to approve a reservation.
Anything that we would be voting on, which would include the consent agenda, or any item on new business, is something that could be addressed.
Exactly.
Well, it's not...
Yeah.
Exiders. Everything else are utilized for reports. But anything else can be discussed at a committee meeting.
Well, the consent agenda has motions, but there's nothing, nothing specific on there, nothing. There's nothing specific on this here, except new business. Check it out, please, because this should come up with everybody, whether you're for it or against it.
The items will be able to be discussed, or the consent agenda items, which are meeting minutes, if you had a concern about the meeting minutes, or item number seven, which would be new business. Everything else is utilized for reports, and anything that any resident or non-resident would like to discuss, has been done at a committee meeting where anything is open for discussion. However, as it stays on the agenda, and has been practiced for some time now.
Yes.
Board meetings are for consent, or I'm sorry, for agenda items only. Committee meetings are for anything. So if there's anything, again, I can address your concerns with the mayor, and he can discuss it at a committee meeting, and we can see if we're, as a board, we can make a decision to change that. But as of right now, the only thing that I would entertain is any questions about the consent agenda or new business. Go ahead.
That was you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great. Moving on, reports of officers. The mayor did submit a notification report. I don't have anything else on here. Those questions, anyone?
First of all, I'd like to thank the beautiful place you made, and really thank just your job on the Veterans Memorial. I think it's wonderful now that we have a Veterans Memorial that we could actually hold, the Memorial Days ceremonies and the Veterans Day ceremonies at the memorial that that was built for. It was a beautiful job, it was very nice. And that's an issue public works, a great job as well, I saw them, they're working there. It looked really great, it was a great event, I was glad to see them come out. And I'm gonna keep it short tonight, I'm just gonna say that there is an ordinance on the books that I'd be happy to supply to anybody who wants it. This board as a whole, not this board in particular, but the board that sat here when that ordinance was created, specifically spells out what can and cannot be done at different meetings. Nobody's trying to be rude, everybody wants your questions answered. However, the mayor's not here today, this mayor pro temp will pass any information out to the mayor. The committee meeting's next Tuesday. There's plenty of time, you can always talk to the mayor, you can call him, you can come here, or you can talk to the department head in charge of the issue that you're having. But we do have an ordinance on the books, and it's up to this board to uphold ordinances. So please, I hope you don't think that we're being rude, because that's not our intention, we care about our residents. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Billis, hurry.
Thank you, number four.
Billis, are you here, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, mayor pro temp, have no report.
Billis, what's your report? Mr. Clark?
Yes, my report is about economic development. Me and my assistant have contacted economic developer, developer, who helped out the previous mayor while he had tech of security trucking companies on the northwest side. He happens to have worked for my, my assistant when he was the mayor of Norfolk. Three things he reported to, and we will be contacting other people, is three things, political stability. We were advised that developers want, want to be fully embraced by Soft Village's elected officials. In other words, whatever's going on, disagreement, if they're, you know, the only way to deal with consider coming here is that the villages, elected officials are in agreement about their economic development. They're concerned about the village's space was the page, in their words, would show political instability. The other thing is, the third, the second thing is, the government's reluctance to pursue completion of the Lilian Expressway. Government's reluctance to embrace the Peatown area. Now, we, we have also gone on Area Devia, Area Devia is a place that rates communities on a lot of different factors. And one of the factors we look at is crime. And this, you go to areadevia.com, verify what I'm telling you. Factors about crime here in, in Soft Village, this station, one in 20 people in Soft Village will be a victim of some type of crime. This is under 2013 crime report, 2014 crime reports are not out, which is what they wanted to develop, so look at your crime. The other thing, so I, you know, what I asked was what we need to do. He said, I need to do some cohesive groups about the villages as leaders, specifically the elected official, and how they think about economic development. Number two, the Facebook page needs to show some political stability. And number three, the crime rates need to be drastically reduced. I've seen them out before.
Um, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. Mr. Fairman, I have a question. How is the village supposed to police the Facebook and make whatever you say stop, stop? How can the village do that?
Trusty Burgess, I have no idea, I have never been on the Facebook page.
No, I'm asking you, you said that they're, that they're reluctant to come until Facebook changes. I'm just asking how, is there, what's your suggestion? That how it can be, I don't know, changed, or go in whatever direction that they wanted to go into? I'm just wondering, what is it that they want? I mean, how do you stop somebody from typing that you may not know? How do you stop somebody from saying anything, and you're not at their house, or whatever? And I'm just wondering why that would be one of the stipulations, um, that they wouldn't come. And the second question I have, you said there's one in Soft Village, I wanna see those figures, that one in every 20, one in 20 people in Soft Village will be a victim of crime. And I just wanted to see, you said 2013, this is 2015. I mean, those are two things that, when I was in part economic development, number one, Facebook never came about. Number two, yes, as far as the administration, yes, people like to have them on board with their, with their ideas, that's something that would be brought up from economic development to the board, when that does happen, and presented to us, in a timely manner, that we can look over it and see if this can reduce us to the village. But the other two things that you, that you stated, as far as crime, um, I don't know how you stop crime, I mean, we could deter it, but actually stop it? I would like to know how, and what plan is that? And also, how do you deter negativity on Facebook? As we all know, negative, um, sales and papers and everything else, how do you stop negative writings on Facebook? I would like to find that out, that would be something I would really like to see, because, only if it's something that's been going on for quite a while, and how you can stop it, I'd like to find that out.
Well, you know, my report was based on when we talked about, not my opinion. You can go on areadevia.com, verify what I just told you, in any part of this country, about crime rates, educational, what they consider to harm education. I reported on the crimes, I reported on what was on there about Soft Village. Uh, and I checked it myself, and I checked it with very different places, just to see if it was true. But anyway, boy, these students aren't looking to be on this paper. Now, how you stop somebody from, uh, uh, folks negativity? I'm not gonna even mention again, because I don't read this. I mean, I'm just, I was reporting, but in economic development, and I have no ideas, uh, that's developed to the point that I have, what I'm, so you have to make any kind of suggestion about it.
Could I, whoever it is that you're talking to, I would love to meet with them, and go over some things, so if that's, if that's possible, um, I would be available to meet with every investors that would like to come into the village, could you include me on that list? Because I would love to talk to them and find out, um, you know, what their, what their view is on that, and also to maybe inform them that, you know, that's, Facebook is Facebook.
I think they're aware of that, but I don't have any problem with talking to the investor, this is one investor we'll talk to, we're gonna be talking to their investors, you have no problem. You know, if they wanna meet with you, we, we can ask them to tell us what was going on, their perspective. You know, that's, that's, that's what we, what you look for when you come to a community developer, do economic development.
Okay, because you did say that they wanted to have the village trustees on board, and I just, if they, if they're looking for that, then fine, I'm sure they would wanna meet us. So I would love to meet with them, and, um, you know, possibly, you know, see what it is that they're looking for more, and, you know, I, I'd be truthful with them. I'm not gonna sit up and say our, our reach changed, or whatever, I just wanted to meet with them, because that's the first time I've ever heard of any investor coming into any village and using Facebook as a basically bargaining chip, that's all.
Well, let me, one final thing, they, they looked up something called Soft Village. They didn't distinguish, I didn't know there was two different Facebooks, and I didn't ask which one they looked at. And so, if they wanna talk to, I'll look for a good time, you know, I'll talk to them and see if they wanna talk to, they're not, I'll tell you the truth.
Okay, but if they, but you stated that they wanted to...
One person, trusty.
No, I'm sorry, I'm never saying, they said, they stated that they wanted the board to be on board with them. Wouldn't they wanna meet with some of the...
They said any board, they said any board, and I said, how about Soft Village? Tell me about that, they said any board who would want them to be accepted when they come in. And they, they said, based on, we tried to straighten them out about, you know, what Facebook book are you looking at? And this is not as far as I know, the official Facebook, at least my guy, my assistant.
No, we don't, we don't have an official, but I just wanna, okay, but then I would still like to meet with, I mean, if this is possible, since they want to make sure that the transition, or that, you know, the board is, I'm sure they would wanna meet with some of the board members and get feedback from them, of whatever business that they're trying to do. And all I'm saying is, I would be available for those type of meetings if, if need be.
If they're willing to come and talk, if this person is willing to come and talk, I will let you know, Mr. Clark.
Trustee, Washington?
Thank you, Madam Pro Temp. First of all, I just wanna address what Mr. Fairman said about asking people that's on Facebook to, uh, refrain that, that not only businesses, but there are people that want to move to Soft Village. And when they're looking at all the negativity that's up on Facebook about Soft Village, they have changed their minds and decided not to come here. That is a fact. The only way you can stop people on Facebook from talking negatively about Soft Village is if you go to the individual, and you ask them if they have enough integrity and enough morale to stop. Because they have, and have faces, and animals, and flowers, and pictures, because they're cowards, and they're not bold enough to put their own name on it. Uh, the mayor, he put up a very beautiful and informative document on our official website about inviting people to come to Soft Village to move out here, trying to get businesses and economic development to move out here. And it was lewd and talked about so bad, and every part of the video just depicted as a lie, that we had to either try to change it, or, or take it down. And if you're trying to build up a community that's already torn down, and you have people that don't even live in your community, tear the community up more on the website. I would love to invite any trustee or any resident to come to any meeting and to know that that is all verifiable. And I myself asked someone today if they were the person in charge of a particular page, and they told me no. It's just a shame, because these trustees, as the board, as the mayor, as the clerk, we are trying to bring economic development, we're trying to get these 100 or some homes that are vacant filled. Nobody wants to move to a community where people are talking about you, or slandering you, and talking about all the break-ins and all the negativity, and adding more numbers that's not even true. So we know who the people are that's talking about Soft Village, your creek, and it doesn't matter if residents don't like it, because you probably the ones that's doing it. But I'm talking, and I got somebody right now, and it's just a shame, because I am one of many trustees that's still up here, along with the mayor, trying to get economic development. I have had developers to come to this village and meet with the mayor, they said, we hear so much negativity about Soft Village, it's the board altogether. Nobody wants to bring millions of dollars out here to build something if the board's not all together, and we all on the same page. That's, that's a fact. So it, I'm concluding, without any respect to you. Uh, when, when Mr. Fairman talked about, he's talking to people that want to bring development to Soft Village, as well as programs to Soft Village, I have a whole youth center, baseball, that wanted to come out here, because they wanted to know, is there something going on? Is there racial out here? People don't wanna bring in the best money in the community where they don't feel the whole board is on, is on the same page. So that is a fact, and I just wanted to add that, and piggyback to what, um, Mr. Fairman said.
I do think that this, obviously, is happening in conversation by many who understand. But if it's possible to maybe get that developer, a developer, whoever's thinking about economic development to come and meet with the board, because it is something that should be discussed, but just because we're up here, I don't think that we should be here too far on the topic. Just as we ask that for the residents, I think that we should offer the same respect to them. So if it's something we can maybe put on a committee, maybe an agenda, where all of the board would have the opportunity to discuss it, we have the opportunity to discuss with the developer, I think that would be better.
And then, yes. Can I ask everybody to silence yourselves, because someone said, don't ask, since we're getting ready, just as courtesy to everybody, would you please silence yourselves?
Anything else? Perfect. Uh, item number four, reports of trustees in the board committees. Let's see where this report came from. communication report, um, the mayor did email it to me. The communication committee would like to thank the volunteers that came out on 5/16/15 and 5/18/15 to pick up the litter throughout the village. We also did some weeding sites ready for planting. We are pleased to announce that all the sites that have adopted the are about the Soft program, the adoption will be announced at a later date. On June 13th, 2015, we will be holding our annual community yard sale from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the property located, located across from New Estes between Cornell and Prairie Avenue. Flyers along with the application are located on the table in Village Hall, at Library USA, and at various locations throughout the village. Please submit your application as soon as possible. As always, we're looking for volunteers and new committee members. We meet the third Wednesday of every month here at Village Hall at 7:00 p.m. this entire report. Okay, um, it will be partners and rest committee, trustee calls.
The committee meeting for partners and rest will meet June 4th at the community center at 7:00 p.m. And as of now, the, the co-trusty have been working on the parade and fireworks. And more details to come. That concludes my report.
Project and finance committee, trustee Kate.
Thank you. As you're aware, this is a new committee that was formed, uh, on the 16th of this month. And I'm putting some materials together on how this committee will operate. But I'm asking for, I would like five volunteers, residents of Soft Village, to serve on this committee. Because we need some outside eyes to look at what we're doing, to make sure we're doing it properly. So I'm asking for five volunteers. You could write your name and contact information on a piece of paper, hand it to me, uh, and then we're gonna set up a preliminary meeting to discuss how we're gonna function. And then we'll start looking at what documents we need to see in order to do our job. So tell your friends and neighbors that we're looking for some volunteers, only five. Uh, we're looking for some volunteers, and, and probably after next week, we're gonna make a selection, and then set up a meeting, that's all I have.
Okay. Public Works slash Lake Michigan Water slash Intermodal Relations Committee, trustee Burges? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, trustee Mike. Public Safety slash Order to Reclaim, trustee Mike.
That's all right.
I'm so sorry.
Okay. Couple items tonight. The debt recovery, uh, committee meeting will be Thursday at 10:00 a.m. here at Village Hall. Order to Reclaim Committee will be at 6, uh, 6:11, 7:00 p.m. here at Village Hall. And I ask everybody, don't forget about Neighborhood March Committee, it's going to be pretty good. And trustee Kate and myself, we just briefly talked tonight about the safety. We have a meeting planned for next week, Wednesday, to sit down and, and go over and outline how the safety committee will operate. With that, if you have any input, please call either one of us, we'll be glad to take the information, and it'll come in helpful, or definitely. And that, madam, that's all I have.
Public Works, Lake Michigan Water, Intermodal Relations Committee, trustee Kate.
Thank you, um, public works, Lake Michigan Water, Intermodal Relations Committee.
It's a lot to say.
All three will meet this, the first two, Thursday of the, of the month at 7:00 p.m. at Village Hall. Um, I'm sure we're gonna come up with a more feasible name, it'll be a little shorter, and, um, we're also going to talk about the issue for next particular meeting. So it will be this Thursday, all those that would like to attend, it'll be here at Village Hall at 7:00 p.m.
I'm sorry, I need to repeat that last sentence.
All those that would like to attend?
I said, the meeting.
The meeting, the three meetings, we're three-headed. This, no, first Thursday, I'm sorry. The first Thursday of the month, um, at 7:00 p.m. here at Village Hall.
Um, yes, it does, but I, I'm, well, I'm waiting to public time, until I want something to be put on the agenda for next week.
Um, Neighborhood March Committee, trustee Washington?
Thank you, Madam Pro Temp, just wanna remind everyone that we will kick off our junior Neighborhood Watch program at our next meeting on, uh, June 8th at the fire station. So if you have any young people on your block that either go to Brickover, or they go to Trail, we would be interested, and letting those young people be, uh, junior block captain captains for the summer months, which will be June, July, August, and then we're gonna have a little call-to-mate program for them in September. We've already contacted the superintendent, uh, Brickover, uh, District 168, as well as Dr. Navarre with Bloom Trail, and they gave those information, packed this out to the seniors that graduated, and to the seniors that graduated, so we'll see how many of them are not going away to college, or on vacation, and that are interested in coming to lead junior neighborhood block captains, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay. Um, Community Public Relations, Community County Partnership Committee, um, like trustee Burgess, we're gonna come up with a more reasonable name, that's, that's just too many things to say. Uh, we will be meeting this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. Um, we are going to be assisting with the Blue Ribbon Walk, which will be held May 30th. Um, registration starts 11:00 a.m. at the fire station, and the walk from the fire station to the police department will begin at noon. Blue ribbons will be placed throughout Soft Village and on our police and versus fire trucks throughout the country. The walk will include a park behind Village Hall, refreshments will be served, but if you cannot join us on that day, please display a group of blue ribbon to show your support. Um, bond deer are needed Friday 7th, uh, Friday 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., um, please see the village clerk. And, um, at our meeting, we will be discussing how we can help with this situation, as well as possibly names for our committee. So that'll be Thursday at 5:00 p.m., and that's all I have. Reports of department committees commissioned by Department of Health and Security, trustee Clark?
Mayor, Billis, and George. Over the past few weeks, fires, rockets, and artillery have caused six firehorns, two vehicles, one truck fired, two structural fires, washing out, child lock, and vehicle, excuse me. And one assistant, another eight. And three summers, finally started showing around here, and it's hard to start getting heated up. You guys, I'm saying it to everybody, if you guys have got some young kids, don't leave them on a car while you're in the, get a gallon of alcohol, it's still, it doesn't take very long. As everybody I'm sure is aware, that we had a structure fire down in the Bay, but we don't get there, so. And at this time, it's still under investigation, at 8:00 a.m., State Farm. I've got a little bit back on me.
Please, Department of Health and Security, trustee Clark?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp and the board. The last two weeks, Soft Village Police Department has bonded 724 calls served. 23 arrests resulted in somebody's fall, crack arrest, included resuspended, no charges, to know about the one D U R, one defi- Track arrest included resuspended, no charge, to know about the one D U R, one felony felony firearm suspended remote, 14 criminal track violations, and 28 written track violations, I'm sorry, warnings. Some of this, we had a felony arrest included, we had a juvenile warrant, juvenile transport to detention center. One felony possession of controlled substance, one endangering a heart with a child, one felony reckless discharge of firearm, one criminal trespass of vehicle, one theft under 300, domestic violence, one robbery, one homicide arrest, charged with first degree murder, two out-of-state warrants, and two disorderly conduct. My reminder, everybody, this Friday is a top of the top. We'll be out at Don't Call It Another today. The goal is from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., but there's strict guidelines that I have to adhere by as far as what I mean in community action. So, we have to be out there regardless of weather, but the man unfortunately will be out there, so. But we will be out there, so we'll be passing out the free going, the top of everything, what kind of, if you come on out and help us raise money for special events. And Mr. Fairman, anyone else to drop a survey? They thought about that website where you were, I didn't, you were, you got these statistics or whatever, you weren't able to pull that website for me? So, I just wanted to get the other damn thing that I really liked there.
AreaLive.com.
I'm sorry?
AreaLive.com.
And is that by the state police or federal?
It's AreaLive.com. Do you draw any place your answer?
B I V, by?
B I V, yes.
I'd like to, please. Um, yeah, trustee, trustee watching.
I want to ask you a question, deputy chief. I just want to ask you a question about the towing. I had a couple of residents that talked to me about the towing. If someone is stopped and for whatever reason the driver cannot continue to drive the car, if there is someone else in the car, whether it's their daughter or friend or neighbor or whatever, if they have a valid driver's license, they cannot drive the car home, the car has to be towed?
It's policy procedure, if the car is towed, the officer has policy service.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Public Works, chairman?
Thank you, madam mayor pro temp. A few items. Our winter schedule branch pickups started on May 4th. We're about three quarters of the way through town. We finished the east side and the south side of town, we're continuing on the north side. Weather permitting and day to day, we will be on and off looking. We have quite a few lots to cut, the grass to cut, so we are trying to get completed on our branch pickup, so please, no more to be put out. Any other sections that have been completed, we will not run back through. Our day-to-day operations, we are basically working a little bit with the police department still, changing oil, small parts on their vehicles, and anything that a resident may call and ask for some assistance on a day-to-day operation. So, if you call the Village Hall and you need something addressed on a day-to-day, we do address that if we can. Buildings outside, PD is completed with the landscaping out there, purification with the water course department did an excellent job. It cleaned up very nicely. Also, the memorial over here is another apartment we started on, turned out very nice. We're currently working on the front of the building and other locations around the home municipal center here, and communication will give us the direction when they're ready to go on the next bigger project, and we'll assist where we can. Potholes, it's been an ongoing problem all season with the start of the season, we're behind definitely on a lot of work. Crew will be out towards the end of the week here, and that is weather made, with the weather we've been having, it seems like every other day we're either having a downpour or we're going to another emergency. Water schedule, we do have our customer service guy out every day, he does his normal schedule through the Village Hall. This week, we also had our south side shut-off list, which we completed at this time. So, we just asked residents, if you get any red notice in the mail, I'd suggest you go pay your bill, because we do not want to shut you off, but if you don't pay, we have to shut you off. Garbage around town, thank you for the purification and cleanup more than last weekend. We do still, at every location in town that we cut and maintain, we do pick up the garbage before and after, sometimes it does go back in, so we do pick it up afterwards. Fuel locations that we're having a little problem cutting, the Village locations, we will definitely cut quicker. Some of the other fields, we will cut back off the roadways, and as the season progresses and hopefully dries out a little bit, we'll be able to get into those fields and maintain them on a more regular basis. Grass cutting, the Village Hall, marquee welcome to 23rd, parks, Torrance Avenue, anything that is visual for South Village is our good right now. We currently have been through at least two cycles of those cuttings. In some areas, we have a few gaps, but we are currently working on that to clean that up. Hydro flushing, our next section will be on the east side of town, that's east side of town is east of Torrance Avenue. We will start on June 2nd, that will be starting at midnight, June 2nd until completed. Streets sweeping, our street sweeper has been on and off, a little bit of work we've been doing the last couple of months, so it's been on, it's been out a little bit, and we've been trying to refuel streets, but June's schedule will come back into normal play, so from the rest of the year on, it should be okay. And that concludes my report.
Trustee watching.
Thank you, madam pro temp. Mr. Well, I have a couple of residents whose young people could do some community service. Do you have anything they could do for community service, like, you know, how they have them with the bags, with the sticks, like picking up garbage or mowing grass? Is there anything they could do for community service with you?
The only issue with any community service is we do not have any supervisor right now.
I'm sorry?
Nobody to supervise, but they have anybody that's there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the administrative services director, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, mayor pro temp. Ticket count for code enforcement from March 1st through the 26th, 86 grass tickets. It's that time of the year, there's a lot of tall grass, people aren't cutting it, we've got a lot of rain, and they're cutting the grass into the streets. So, we ask, do not cut the grass into the streets, it goes down to the storm sewers and block me. 29 parking tickets, nine honorable auto tickets, and nine, no certificate of occupancies, and there's like three property maintenance, and a couple of business licenses still haven't been renewed, a couple of small businesses haven't yet been in. And vehicle stickers are going to sell, they must be on your vehicle July 1st, $30 for a passenger, $40 for a truck, and one senior discount for household, which is a discount of $20. And that concludes my report.
Quiet ass director, director Rob.
Thank you, mayor pro temp. I have a couple things. The audit for 2014-15 has started. The auditors that are here, that's barring, that are in Gironco, Toronto, Atlanta, San Jose. We are planning to get the audit done within another three months, by the end of August at the latest. And the next thing is, I met with the controllers of this personnel regarding the local debt record program. We have been already assigned a number, that means a registration number, to go ahead with the implementation of the debt submittal. We have already submitted one setup pre-trolling in this program. And there were about 30 to 35 candidates in the first round. Moving forward, there will be at least approximately about 50 numbers going forward, and it will be submitted pretty soon. That is my report, thank you.
Interrelations commission? I'm sorry, excuse me. Back with the home management, director Johnson.
Thank you, madam pro temp. Over the last two weeks, as we responded to tech calls, one child, five cars, two firearms, one school patrol, two structural fires, one has mental illness, one mental assist, one assist other agency, and power outage. We also did provide security in the fire scene for two man a days, for the, you know, the city lady, the city girl, so that's why, on a regular basis. And just a reminder to everybody, Thursday evening, Brickover's graduation, May 18th, it starts at 7:00 p.m. Traffic signs once added, six and nine is the added, so if you'd like to try to get into it, or rather, if you want to add, and then prove that you're working.
Question? There appears to be an overlap of what Homeland Security is doing and what the Fire Department reports, how, how does that work?
As, as the response, the Fire Department responds to acceptable ambulance assist, or any cardiac, it's to make sure that the firemen and all police officers are safe while they're working their work, hard down, if there's not safe, and control the scene while we're doing what they need to do.
Okay, so when you get figures of things you responded to, we also received figures from the Fire Department, are they overlapping?
Well, yeah, because it's the same thing that what we responded to, we've done, and I have to be in the separate report. There are some times where I don't have a person on that I responded, so it's not easy to get off a little bit. They take care of school patrol and stuff like that.
Correct, correct. All right, thank you very much.
Let me check.
Yeah, I had a question about graduation. That there wasn't nothing in my thin, so I don't know. I don't really think to do it that, I don't know what records procedure normally is, but thankfully you fobbed out about it, because I think the person would normally handle it kind of drop off this year, because we all just got notified.
I've received, I haven't received a lot of analysis, just one fire situation, I don't know if I made one of it. I don't know the way you know, but I didn't hear it all that.
You, you have. I didn't see, I had to get off to 7:12, so. We, we usually got more notice and actual invitation, and this was just a letter, so you might like.
It was in the yellow envelope.
Yeah, the yellow.
John gave himself like a brush of control. He does more what it happens, but he made a person on his head.
Oh, good.
He wanted to go.
Nobody would, nobody would.
We got a break, we ordered, we only need two. So.
I told her, she said she was, you know, dead long, but that's not a conversation I have, you know? That was a property.
Right. I'm not sure where the kind of mishaps happened, but I think it's safe to say that the board appreciates all of the sinewy services that you guys are going to provide on Thursday for the safety of our residents and our students. It's always possible, but we'll gladly pay it. Anything else? Human Relations Commission, commissioner Smith, please.
Thank you, madam pro temp. The next scheduled meeting of the Relations Commission is on Monday, 7:00 p.m. here at the community centers in the conference room. We'd like people to come out, because we want to hear your input and your feedback, and we're also in the planning stages for a diversity dinner in Winterlot at my report.
Great. How is the commission, commissioner, very helpful?
No report, commissioner.
Okay. Oh, you have help.
Thank you, madam mayor, this report is from Rose Langston. The senior sneakers classes have been canceled for two weeks and will resume Tuesday, June 9th at 10:00 a.m. and 11:15 a.m. Instructor Bev Steric will be out of town to help her daughter and new grandson Henry Jose Hong. There is no cost to silver sneaker members and only $2 per class for non-members. However, both classes' cost is only $3. All donated paperback books have been filed and the program has many participants. The hardcover books are being donated to the Conphy Public Library to make room for the many, many paperback book donations. Only large print hardcover books are welcome. Bloom Township Annual Senior Pickment is Thursday, August 6th, and tickets are $3 each, will be available July 1st. Senior Wheels provides inexpensive transportation within the township and some medical facilities out of township. Call 708-754-8200 the date before requesting transportation and perspective information. For additional information, call 708-754-9400. The three senior organizations meeting in the senior center welcome seniors 50 years and young and older. See posted calendars for dates and times. The Conphy Library is requesting plastic caps and three plastic bags for the community garden bench. See posted flyers for details. The next senior committee meeting will be on Thursday, June 11th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you, this ends Miss Langston's report.
Besides the diary, does anybody have any issues with the, what's the other?
Madam mayor pro temp, I understand, looking at the consent agenda, looking at the dates, I wonder what the newly elected trustees would vote on something in ways of how they...
We're in high stakes.
Okay, then it cannot be this consent agenda?
You can vote something, you can say something.
Okay, but if you want to ask for consent.
They can vote for it.
I'm just asking, okay, so you're saying, Mike, that they can be part of a consent even though they're not votes, that's the thing?
They're just saying that they are.
I guess they can't even vote for it, because, you know, hypothetically, a whole group of us voted in, and that would be approved, you know, in a later meeting, so it allows for it, because if you're the tape, places that tape questions, but they can't vote for it.
Can I have a motion for the other, and definitely? Some vote.
Second?
Any other kind of question? Both first, please, Paul Roll, Burgess.
Yes.
Jones.
Stay.
Myers.
Yes.
Stace.
Stay.
Washington.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I have a number seven. Most of the public house pay on this person from May 13th, 2015 through May 26th, 2015, and I have most of the proof.
Second?
Any kind of questions?
Question? Mohawk page. Page one, right after the current page. I don't, I don't know, it's, it's on the general fund municipal audit, $5,000. Is that, that's not what the dollar, what are we talking about? What is that $5,000?
That's for the, that's for the professionals who are these, be charged by the auditors for doing the extra work, extra work conditions. They had to re-report the audit for the 2013 and 14, for that, for the charge, and the charge was about $5,000.
Also, this is for services that were for the 2013, 14?
13, 14. They reissued the audit.
They reissued again.
Reissued audit, correct.
Okay, and this is what they charged?
Yes.
Okay, did we know they were going to charge that?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, I saw that, I did see per services, the 14, I thought we paid them everything.
No, we had paid everything. This is the last bill for the reissue of the original audit. The original audit had no funding information for police as well as the fire department funds, so that was included in order to comply with the company.
Okay.
Ordinance and the state ordinance, so that's why.
It was the extra work they had to put into, is basically what you're saying, that's what they charged for?
Yes.
Okay, because I wasn't aware that they were going to charge, or you're saying that was extra, because I knew that we paid more for that, but I didn't know that it was going to be additional.
Additional, yes.
Right.
But now, but now, we asked the auditors to do the reissue of the report they had charged, it's not under, it's not.
Okay. Question? Why wasn't that bill geared to the original audit?
It was not geared to the original audit, because it was the last moment we requested to do the reissue of the audit. So, because the original audit did nagging through police and fire, I mean, police and fire pension funds, so we requested in order to get a good deal on the refinancing of some of the files.
And the previous audits did not contain those examples?
They didn't contain.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm glad you said that that was for the police and fire, because they were taking, it was taking a while for them to even.
Yes.
Okay, did that cost go back to them? Because it was their reason that, it was, it was.
No, no, because we had to pay the costs.
Even though it was, it was theirs.
Their problem, but.
We paid, we absorbed that.
We absorbed it, yes.
I was going to say.
Even if you pay, even if you build it, they're not going to pay us, so.
Who's that?
Oh, okay.
Who, who, wow. Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I do know that they were, they were late on it, and I just didn't want, I didn't know that we've actually built for that particular audit, for the police and fire picture.
Any other question?
Yes, I have, sir. On, on the first page, it says accounts payable and immediate checks were issued for several items. If the fact the trustees authorized payment, these never came before trustees to vote on, how, so why would they need to? on, how, so why were immediate checks issued without a vote of the trustees?
Good question.
There are some instances where the finance director has been given the authority to do that, but as long as they're on account payable, that's the bottom line, but as the share of finance, please, that might be something that you want to bring up, if I have a question?
Move, Captain. Uh, second item is.
Oh, finance director.
The reason for recording the mandates are some of the payments that are very critical, like health insurance premium, if you don't pay on time, the health insurance will be canceled, and we will be in deep trouble.
We meet every two weeks, how much, what's we meeting?
Um, normally, we will try to pay at either on 20th or 21st, because until then, we have a lifetime, the insurance providers will not charge us any late fee.
But even American Express, American Express gives you more than 15 days to pay, so I just see a sense of urgency.
At the same time, we will not have enough funds to pay during the regular accounts payable, that's why I try and offer to schedule those payments when the money is available, otherwise we would be in trouble, you know?
Question. Thank you. Um, I, on page two, it says gateway business systems, uh, this is on the fire extension, it's a copier release, would it be cheaper to purchase a copier, or do we pay $200 for a copier every month, every two months?
Um, it is, it is.
I don't know where to look.
It is an installment payment on a regular basis, a copier. Uh, it's like, there, if you go, if you use about $200, $300 copies, they will charge you per page, copier.
And this copy, how long?
Probably about three or four years.
At $200?
Yeah.
I think we could have purchased one, don't you think so?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
No.
It is not cheaper, because it costs all the, another parts that, everything, you can, like mains and this contract, even if you mention break down, you don't have to pay anything, you don't have to pay for any costs, you don't have to pay for any parts that, so.
Okay, final item, uh. What is, I'm sorry, this is page two, I thought that was page two. Okay, on the rural page two, water fund, water department fund, this Allen, Matt, and Sons Inc., who do a water treatment, uh, what is it, for $98,000, what does that consist of? Where am I looking?
Uh, it's, it's a water sewer contractor, uh, we would pay, they pay on a regular basis. This, this is the 14th or 15th payment we are making, this is what it was, water project.
And how many water payments?
Uh, I think for.
Water, two.
Water payments.
All right, thank you, let this all out.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Those per, is Paul.
Versus?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion to put ribbon, we should appropriate a class eight, we want to say time to set the classification for the occupation of abandoned property in the Little Rock that was cooked in Will County, Illinois, testing the class of, my motion for per.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second, and any other questions? Here, now, those per, is Paul.
Versus?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, I know the number eight, but when there's comments, the board, the mayor trustee, um, Mary, you can start with me, but trustee Burris, I've been asked a comment earlier, so let's talk about it.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, I would like to add, if it's possible, on the next agenda for committee and ordinance review, one question, the comments from the residents at every meeting, to include, um, do we need to talk about that and change ordinance on that, that's something I'd like to bring up. And then, um, also, Mr. Farrelly, was there a sweep conducted at Village Hall recently? And if so, why, and how much did it cost?
We have to talk to Mayor about whether or not there was a sweep at Village Hall, I don't know what hall, if they go into all areas, but I know that we are checking to Village Hall and see if there's anything going on, but the cost was less than $5,000.
Okay, you said, you said, ask the mayor why?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I mean, but you're the village manager, wouldn't you be on top of that, the reason why they, they did?
I'll be on top of it, trustee, but I'm not gonna answer for us, but Mayor, I'll answer.
Okay, how much was it, you said again?
Man, I said less than $5,000.
Was it $4,999? I'm just asking, because the reason why I'm asking that is who, you know, who authorized, who discussed, who said anything they wanted, and that's why I was, that's the reason why I was asking, things like that, I'm pretty sure you would, you know, inform the board, I was never informed, I don't know if any of the board members ever informed that what was being conducted, and, um, you said the mayor authorized it, but I didn't, you know, I'm just wondering why he did it, what, what was the reason, did he suspect something, something going on, or something wrong, it was never conveyed, and that's why I was asking, I thought maybe you would kind of know that since you were, you know, are the village manager, that's.
I am the village manager, and you guys, village manager, but I'm not gonna answer for the mayor, I can't do that, you know?
Okay, but you, could you ask the mayor, could you please inform us, and could you do that, could you ask him, could you please inform us, ask to why, and, um, and exact, exact cost for how much it did cost? Thank you.
Travis Washington. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that, um, as co-chair of Parks and Rites, I did meet with trustee Jones, and we made regard to the parade and the fireworks show, and I think we had a very productive meeting, excuse me, in regard to the layout for the parade and the blueprint for the fireworks show, since already is the budget, and I would just like to echo him by asking the residents to volunteer for the parade, we would like to encourage all of the committees to get involved in the parade, we need some feedback to know exactly how many cars, how many vans, how many floats, we need that information ASAP. The parade is like five weeks out, uh, I'm gonna tell you that date, it's going to be July 4th, that Saturday. Okay, so, the five weeks to go, if you're gonna be in the parade, we would, we need to let you know, we need you to let us know, and trustee Jones know, how many cars, how many vans, your committee, all of the board members that sit up here, all these long names, all these committees, we want all of your committees to be in the parade, decorated a wonderful, showing unity in Saw Village at the parade. We want people to stay in the park, we're attempting to get vendors to be in the park, if you've worked with the parade before, if you know any vendors, if you do crafts, whether it's just informational table, where you can bring Jesse White, Tommers, Baracko Boll, Jesse, or whoever, you know that you can call to come to Saw Village Parade, we need them to make our parade as it, as it's always been. Also, like you attended, the veterans ceremony was very, very nice, with the local ministers there, with singing and praying and all the things that went on, it was very nice, even though it rained a little bit, I would like to be a part of that, and that concludes my report.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um, just as a reminder, I know we talked about, um, the ribbon walk, the second, um, on Saturday, um, the Khatatat, and also Sunday is the 31st soup night, and as a reminder, um, the 31st soup is now $1.31, so don't forget that, uh, but it'll be.
Oh, that's 31st soup night, that's the night the fire department, um, the burn camp.
Okay, did everybody hear that?
No.
All right, the same night, which is Sunday, the $1.31 soup night, the fire department will be there to apply money for the burn camp, so y'all go into one, save $1.31 for ice cream foam, give the rest of your money, change for your 20, you're a fire department, or you split the change for the 20, and give it to the police department and the fire department, so make sure that, you know, everybody, special lookbooks and burn camps will be funded, um, so take your spare change, and make sure that you do that. And also, Advanced Auto Parts is holding a first annual car show, Saturday, May 30th, um, 5 to 8 PM, and, um, best of show, oldest car, mayor's choice, um, that's the prizes are associated with the section of the car show. What's happening on the back table, and all the stuff is in there, so make sure you get that, that's all I have, question?
I did mention to the mayor about the blue ribbons, and where are we gonna get the blue ribbons from, and are they kind of the uniform, and everybody has the same shade of blue, do you know, do they run around the trees at our house, or are we just gonna walk them around, our brace, brace, bracelets?
Actually, uh, that's what we're gonna be talking about Thursday night, if you want to come out and join us at the public relations meeting, uh, we have some samples of ribbons that we're gonna look at, but the better one is somebody's come out on Friday, to , to, we're gonna decorate the trees on Friday, so when we do the walk at the center, the trees are already decorated.
The trees here at the Village Hall, in this area.
And we're gonna try and, we're gonna try and, we're gonna try and do some trees on Zuck Trail. Walk's gonna start in the fire department, then walk down Zuck Trail. So we have some ribbon, I have the volunteers on Thursday, are going to come up and check how we're going to put them on the tree, uh, the ribbon that we picked up so far, it's about that wide, and it's like a little hoop, and, but anybody who put ribbon on their own tree, doesn't have to be on Zuck Trail, we're encouraging residents to put ribbons on their own trees, any color we want, however, to be part of the Saw Village ribbon wall, we're asking that you need a solid fire station, and on Thursday night, and the public relations committee will be making ribbons, and on Friday, we tend to try, we will be actually putting ribbons on trees, there's lots of ways to get involved, it's a very good question, but the ribbon set we found, that's short, that's made, they're about that wide.
That's gonna be beautiful.
And we're just gonna stock up our ribbon, and hopefully have lots of sponsors to help us put ribbon on trees.
So that, rather than from the fire station to the police station, and then we're gonna be in the park, out there with hot dogs and all of that, after this, but everybody's made to come?
We'll be walking.
Okay, and the last question, can we drive to the parade, or do we have to walk?
According to, we have to walk, uh, because it's too late, go ahead, that you can, why is it that, or, or?
What they would have is, is, we're gonna have to walk, right now, it's the way it's set up, is they will be walking, like you go outside lane, where I'm working with my brother, it's from, and behind, we're walking, and then on that personnel, they're almost screaming at soccer, and we're, we're coming down here to walk, you know, if we go walk, that's, that's the plan. If not, if not able to walk, uh, we say, listen, if you're self-respect, here in the hands, and help out in here.
If you're not able to walk, we need to make a little poster, a nice little sign, if you stay at Torrance, and read this as we walk from the fire station to the police station, um, signs, posters, anything you have.
It's not, it's not, we need to be four o'clock, we need to ride with families, or children, the children drive a bicycle, you know.
One lane.
It's just, the speed is walk, and it'll be long way with the car, it's just like four o'clock, just be a, all the way.
First act, we did, so please, we can be patient with us, we want a great turnout, and we want it to be a great one, so thank you for your questions.
Uh, thank you. I had several issues that I wanted to address, but I hope it went to the mayor, uh, he gets back.
I appreciate that.
Uh, I don't see Mike, did Mike leave? Okay, uh, one of the issues that I wanted to discuss was the 911 system, and there was a gentleman here earlier that wanted to talk about that, but it wasn't on the agenda, so I'll get in contact if you want.
And I did, um, write down, the three people who did come up, I did write down comments to what they had to say, and I will place them as a mid-block, so if you would adjust, um.
Post-its?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Best to mine.
Okay.
With that, I would like to entertain the local clerk, Almo, Almo Saylor, uh, thank you very much.